Good evening, welcome to the December 21st, I'm sorry, January 4th meeting of Troy City Council. Happy New Year. I'm Marty Baker, President of Council, and tonight I welcome our returning Director of Law, Grant Kerber.
Oh, thank you.
And also our new City Auditor, John Friggi, and our new Councilman, John Twilliger. Welcome. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. We will begin with the invocation by Mayor Michael Bemish, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Let us be in a spirit of prayer. Almighty God, as we reflect back on this past year and what has been accomplished, let us now look forward with vision and hope for a bright new 2016. Give us your divine guidance and wisdom to make those decisions that will move our community forward. Help us to continue to work together as a team in thought, word, deeds, and actions. Be with all of our citizens, our elected officials, our city staff, that together we will maintain this city as a great place to live, work, and play. God, give us a peace in this world full of hurt. Bring those serving all safely home to their families. And finally, God, fill our hearts and minds with your peace. Let kindness and hope fill each new tomorrow. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath.
Here.
Mr. Kendall.
Here.
Mrs. Oda.
Here.
Mr. Phillips.
Here.
Mr. Swazer.
Here.
Mrs. Snee.
Here.
Mr. Twilliger.
Here.
Mr. Tremble.
Here.
Mr. Twist.
Here.
All members are present.
Our first order of business tonight is ordinance 01-2016, to employ the Clerk of Council. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
I need to read it by title.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 01-2016, ordinance employing Clerk of Council and fixing compensation. First reading.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Swazer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Tremble.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Motion adopted.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Tremble to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Tremble.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Okay, and now Mrs. Knight will take the oath of office.
I just say it.
You would.
I assume I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Ohio, that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge the duties of office of Clerk of Council, City of Troy, State of Ohio during my continuance in said office.
Okay, well, now we need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll move to, excuse me, council into executive session for discussion or preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions, excuse me, with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to move into executive session. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Tremble.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
We will be returning soon as we're finished. Thank you.
Motion that we return to regular session from council.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to return to regular meeting following the executive session. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Tremble.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Motion is adopted.
Okay, Mrs. Knight circulated the most recent rules of council, and tonight we'll need a motion to approve the rules of council. Is there any further discussion before we have a motion?
No, I'll move to accept the rules of council as submitted.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Twist to approve the rules of council. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Tremble.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mrs. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Tremble.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Tremble.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall is elected.
Thank you.
And we now entertain a motion to elect a clerk pro temp of council. Do we have anyone that wishes to do that?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Heath.
Okay.
Return the favor.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Snee to elect Mr. Heath as president, I'm sorry, clerk pro temp of council. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Tremble.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Heath is elected as clerk pro temp.
Thank you.
Mrs. Knight, please read the summary of the minutes of the December 21st meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of Council, December 21, 2015, Law and Ordinance Committee provided a report regarding ordinance number 04125, that it be amended. Ordinance number 04125, amend the general plan portion of the Stonebridge Meadows Plan Development, was given third reading and was amended. The amendment was approved. Ordinance number 0472015, amend sections of Chapter 141 related to benefits of employees, was given first reading and adopted, following various comments and presentation of plaques to outgoing elected officials. Council did adjourn at 7:26.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to approve the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Tremble.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Move on to committee reports. Our first committee report this evening is from the Finance Committee and Chairman, Mr. Tom Kendall.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have one report this evening, referring to ODOT's cooperative purchasing program. On December 23rd, this committee met to consider authorizing the City of Troy to participate in the Ohio Department of Transportation (ODOT) cooperative purchasing program. Similar to the state purchasing program, participating in this ODOT program could provide potential cost savings due to the volume purchasing of ODOT. There is no cost to join this program. It is a recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the City of Troy to participate in the ODOT cooperative purchasing program, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Swazer, Mr. Tremble, and myself as Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Are there any questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Kendall.
Thank you.
Our next report is from the Personnel Committee and Chairman, Mr. Twilliger.
Thank you, Madam President. Our oral report deals with a request by the President of Council, has requested that Ed Westmeyer be reappointed to a two-year term to the Board of Tax Appeals, with a new term ending 12/31/2017. The new tax code requires the appointment of a Board of Review, two members of which are approved by the council, and one member appointed by the Director of Public Service and Safety and approved by council. All three members of the Board of Tax Appeals, Mark Douglas, Kent Casmire, and Ed Westmeyer, have agreed to also serve as members of the Board of Review, with terms matching the terms of the Board of Tax Appeals. For the Board of Review, the President of Council has recommended approval of the appointments of Mr. Casmire and Mr. Westmeyer, and Mr. Titterington has recommended approval of the appointment of Mr. Douglas. A motion, I have two. The first motion would be that we, the reappointment of Ed Westmeyer to the Board of Tax Appeals to be approved for a new two-year term ending 12/31/2017.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Twilliger and seconded by Mrs. Snee to approve the appointment of Mr. Westmeyer. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Tremble.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
And I have a second motion in which I move that the following appointments to the Income Tax Board of Review be approved, that being for Mark Douglas for a term of January 1 of 2016 through December 31 of 2016, appointee of the Director of Public Service and Safety. Next, Kent Casmire for a term of January 1, 2016, through December 31 of 2016, appointee of council. And Ed Westmeyer for a term, January 1 of 2016 through December 31 of 2017, appointee of council.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Twilliger and seconded by Mr. Twist to approve the terms of Mark Douglas, Mr. Casmire, and Mr. Westmeyer. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Tremble.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Twilliger. Is there any further reports to come before council? We now open the meeting to citizen comments. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Kerber is our timekeeper. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to any of the agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address before addressing council. Seeing none, then we'll move on to resolutions and ask Mrs. Knight to read Resolution R1-2016.
Resolution number R1-2016, resolution authorizing the sale during calendar year 2016 of municipally-owned personal property which is not needed for public use or which is obsolete or unfit for the use for which it was acquired by Internet auction pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 721.15D. The annual approval of this resolution is actually a matter of housekeeping required by the Ohio Revised Code. First reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swazer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Tremble.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swazer to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Tremble.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R2-2016.
Resolution number R2-2016, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with the international, with the local 1638 of the International Association of Firefighters and declaring an emergency. This establishes the wages, benefits, and terms and conditions of employment for the firefighters covered by the agreement through 2018. First reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Tremble.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Tremble.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R3-2016.
Resolution number R3-2016, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with FOP, Ohio Labor Council, Inc., and declaring an emergency. This sets forth the wages, benefits, and terms and conditions of employment through 2018 for the police captains. First reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Tremble and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Tremble.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swazer to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Tremble.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
We'll move on to ordinances and ask Mrs. Knight to read ordinance 041-2015.
Ordinance number 041-2015, an amended ordinance amending the general plan portion of the Stonebridge Meadows Plan Development. This is the fourth reading.
Any comments from council?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to indefinitely suspend or postpone legislation on this matter.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mrs. Snee to indefinitely postpone any legislation on this matter. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Tremble.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
The motion is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance 02-2016.
Ordinance number 02-2016, ordinance releasing mortgage lien for NHF Print, Inc., and declaring an emergency. The loan made in the year 2000 has been paid off, and so therefore the mortgage lien needs to be released. First reading.
Any questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mrs. Oda to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Tremble.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Tremble to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Tremble.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance 03-2016.
Ordinance number 03-2016, ordinance fixing salaries and wages for certain employees of the City of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This sets the salaries through 2018 for police captains and those covered by the IAAF agreement. First reading.
Are there any comments or questions from council? Motion to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Oda and seconded by Mr. Phillips to suspend the rules.[1302.42] It's been moved by Mrs. Oda and seconded by Mr. Phillips to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mrs. Snee to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read our final ordinance of the evening, 04 2016.
Ordinance number 04 2016, ordinance authorizing the City of Troy, Ohio, to participate in the Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchasing Program. First reading.
Any comments or questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swazer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yep.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
That completes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
There are not.
Mayor Bemish, do you have any comments this evening?
Other than each of you received at your chair tonight, the annual report, it's a highlight synopsis of 2015, which I'm required to present to you at this first meeting in January of 2016. And that's it. You've got some reading to do, I guess.
Thank you. Mr. Titterington, comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one housekeeping item, and that is, next council, regular council meeting would normally be on January 18th, however, that is Martin Luther King Day. City building is closed, and so the council meeting will be the following evening. Trash and recycling pickup, however, will be on the normal schedule. We do not delay for that holiday or any others besides Christmas and New Year's. That's all I have. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Kerber, any comments this evening?
Mr. Livingston asked me to inform you that, like the mayor's report, I think, believe that that is, his report has been circulated, and he asked that I let you know that you have that with your information. Other than indicating that I'm looking forward to working with city council and continuing to work with the city administration, that's all I have to say this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kerber. Mr. Friggy, comments this evening?
I believe the anticipated response is, I have nothing at this time, ma'am. You were that well, didn't you?
Are there any comments from council members this evening?
Yes, Madam President.
Mr. Swazer?
Coming up on January 18th, we will have the annual celebration of Dr. Martin Luther King. This will start in the southwest quadrant, or quadrant of the Proudy Plaza, down by Bakehouse Breads. We're going to do a march over to...
What time?
9:30. There'll be a march. We'll go down to the police station. We're going to have a prayer down there, and then we're going to end up at First United Church of Christ.